Rob Kauf, please.
Lanning Jewell.
Here.
Ms. Grant Burton.
Here.
Rod Sestreveno.
Here.
Joe Hayes.
Here.
Tick Bryan.
Here.
Kathy Born.
Here.
All present.
Okay. Uh, Pruego at the Minnix for October 7th, 2014.
Please, Frank.
And person second, all in favor?
Aye.
Both, and it's surpassed. This time we have communications from citizens if anyone would like to address the council, uh, come to the podium.
My name is Derek Dawson. With regard to ordinance 4730, the sales tax referendum. Andy Wright, now that the sales tax referendum failed, what is the plan to back the bonds on funding the extension of Legends Drive and back with, um, Boulevard?
I don't know.
Does anyone know? I haven't been able to find out the answer. Pardon?
The sales tax was never tied to, directly to that, so.
Not directly, but, uh, maybe not directly, but I'll speak to that just one moment. Are you gonna interject?
No, I was just gonna say that I think Commissioner Springer's pretty well given us the, uh, layout of the bonding of the roads. Now beyond that, I'm not real sure.
What, what, what would?
That any, we'll talk about the tail.
What would back the bonds? Well, if you will, Ms. Dawson, just go and make your statement. Well, I'm asking a question rather than a statement. I haven't made a statement. We're, we're asking you just go and make your comments and, and then we'll.
My comment to follow that is in regard to September the 16th council meeting, uh, with regard to your comments after I spoke, Councilor Sestreveno, to my dismay, after the sales tax referendum, uh, you began to speak of the next sales tax referendum in the future, but previous to the sales tax referendum, you had said that would be the last time you ever supported one. But that's, that's not my point with regard to 9/16. On 9/16, I suggested that the council be totally honest with the community with regard to one of the factors that drove the sales tax referendum was the extension of Legends Drive and facilitation of the entertainment district whereby you said that wasn't true. Uh, in your behalf, uh, you weren't present when the following took place. On January the 10th of this year, Mayor Craighead and, and the council had a meeting, uh, with the school board and county officials with regard to the entertainment district and using school funds out of that district, as you're well aware. Um, that night, no school board member showed up and only three county commissioners showed up. During that meeting, Councilor Jewell asked Mayor Craighead, and Mayor Craighead honestly replied to, uh, Councilor Jewell. Councilor Jewell asked Mayor Craighead, "Do you intend to use any of the sales tax proceeds if the sales tax referendum passes to use for the extension of Legends Drive?" Mayor Craighead said, "Yes, but," and he said, "I cannot, uh, bring the legislation to do that. I would support that, but a council will have, we have insulation." Obviously, uh, he intended that, for that council, to be you, no doubt. Uh, also, uh, this past year, the sales tax referendum, uh, and the facilitating legislation for the extension of Legends Drive, the entertainment district and the arena ran concurrently on the agenda. And there are other reasons, uh, that support, that support that part of the reason of the sales tax referendum was for the extension of Legends Drive. So, uh, I rebut what you said, that it's not. It is, it was a deal. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the council?
Yes.
I'm Cory Scherer, Level 225 East Spring Street. I just wanna talk about the old business ordinance number 14-4655. I'm just want to express, we've, we've expressed with the planning commission and, uh, I don't believe we expressed last time when it came forward here, but we just, we got a lot in, our neighbors have met, um, a lot over this. We've met four or five times. Um, I haven't met anyone that said they're, they really want this type of high density. We right now, at the average sized, um, lot would be like a half acre to an acre where one family lives, and this is gonna put 55 families on five acres, so that's like putting, you know, on my, you know, .75 acre lot, that's like putting seven families there. So we, we're just really concerned about the density of it and what it's gonna do with our traffic. There's, uh, down by the Dome Palace, it's just rammed down there when you try to go, and that's where the, the traffic's gonna be blocked there, and so then they're gonna be coming by our area. So, we just really do not want that to, uh, pass. So, thank you.
Good evening. Tracy Parks, Chairman of the Historic Preservation Commission, uh, to speak just briefly on ordinance number 144778, which is this council's opportunity to create Lebanon's first historic district. The Historic District Commission invites you to do so. Uh, we think this is an excellent example. We put forth, uh, green lawn, uh, which is an early development, began in 1930, has an excellent, uh, variety of architectural styles, well-preserved, uh, including colonial revival, Tudor, Mediterranean revival, Spanish colonial revival, and it's an excellent neighborhood to, to start this process, and we encourage you to look at that. Thank you.
Tracy, I have.
One question. I, I know we've got the list of those on there. I mean, is, is that ones that are, are all of them wanting? Were there some others in that? I was just trying to get feel for it.
We've had a public hearing on, on this matter. We, you know, we believe it's, our job is to recommend this to the city council, and I've, I've had, I think I may have told you privately in conversation, one, uh, one person who demonstrated some concern about what powers the Historic Preservation Commission have. That was very early on in the process, and we've had several public hearings since then with no repeat of that, so.
Thank you. Appreciate y'all's work on the issue.
Uh, I see. We were. Uh, what a response. I was hoping that we'd have a special guest here tonight, but, uh, they must be in another meeting or couldn't get here. Uh, just to let everyone know, we have, uh, Venezuela group in, based in Lebanon. They've been talking and, uh, learning about our youth sports programs, how they work, how the government works to help them in, uh, in just as kind of a state department program, I believe, and they come over, and I think they're what, about 20 people or so from Venezuela, and they've, uh, been having a lot of meetings and, uh, very interested. William, uh, spoke with them, and I think they're coming over to the Floyd Center later along with other people. And, um, so if you see a, a group around and they show up, uh, please try to make them welcome, you know. Uh, also, over here to the right, you see the, uh, flag. This was donated to us by Tetanus Tile, a new company that relocated here in, uh, Lebanon here this, just past two months. Uh, they're from Italy, and, uh, they wanted to show their appreciation not only to the city of Lebanon, but also to the chamber for what all we did to work with them to make a transition from Italy over to here and set up the factory, and, uh, they wanted to give this to the city of Lebanon in their appreciation, and it's a beautiful piece of work. So, they do, uh, decorative, uh, custom tile, uh, borders and different things. They have a plan to be adding more lines later along with, uh, more employment and good quality paint, so. We've got the Halloween on the square, uh, Friday night, and what time's the Pruego kickoff?
5:00.
5:00. And also, uh, on Saturday, we have the, uh, Scotty, uh, the.
November 1st.
Fire Department playing the police department in flag football at 12:00 up at the Old Lebanon High School.
Yes, sir. November 1st.
Is it at the Old Lebanon?
Yes, sir.
Are you applying to?
November 1st.
Okay.
And, uh, the money is gonna be done to raise for, uh, uh.
The toys.
Toys for the.
Yes, the toys for the fire department.
For the fire department. Okay. All right. Lanning?
Uh, yes. Jeff, I need to get with you, uh, I think that, I know that our doctor several up the office on flooding issue over Queen Raptor, you know? Uh, and, uh, they started something, didn't get finished, but, and that brings me to one in the back of Contiki. But, uh, we've created an issue, there's a couple people getting flooded after having before, and I think this kinda ties in. It deals with the, the development that didn't get developed. And so we, we've talked in the past about how sometimes the neighbors get moved out, and we're not following through on, I know they, I think they, matter of fact, I think this was one bankrupt, but the neighbors are still paying for it. Uh, and I got, uh, Mr. Springer, and, uh, I've been looking at some of the deals. I know when, when we went through some of our, uh, work sessions and things, we were talking about the, the money, the unobligated money, as it's come up and things, and you presented us with the unobligated money. But I would kind of like a little bit of a timeframe on how this is kind of built up. I know back then at work session, you said part of it started before you got on board. The, the money above the nine million because, you know, I mean, we were sitting there, I started, I don't wanna take part of the rocks still, but, but at times, we were talking about deficit budgets and things, and, and we had this money building up. I kinda wanna see a timeframe on how this was rolling in.
Well, I, I understand a lot of that, right that way. I mean, we had the nine million. We used, uh, but to balance the budget, the assumption that we would draw it out of, of that, our reserves if we had to. Fortunately, by watching our dollars all through the year, we really didn't have to make that, uh, dip into that. And right now, a lot of the revenues for, uh, sales tax and other things, because the economy's picking up, uh, the vast majority of that, uh, reserve of where you have, um, has increased a little. And, uh, also, you all, we always did have a flow of dollars, uh, available to the city for cash flow of, uh, to pay the bills and all, um, especially, you know, because money comes in greater at one time of the year as opposed to other, so we've always kinda had that, so. But that takes care of the vast majority. I meant to, uh, over there, you know, we made the adjustment in the, uh, utilities and, and all, and, uh, they, they are doing well now compared to what they were struggling back in 08.
So it's just slowly built up, then, I mean, you know, it, 'cause at times, it seems like sometimes when we get into budgets and things, we're, we're talking about how dire straits we're in, and then other times, you read the paper and it says 15 billion, I mean.
No, I think we're, I think we're talking more about, uh, won't, you know, not go backwards with our revenues, but, uh, always trying to, uh, balance the budget with, uh, projected revenues to projected expenses.
Well, I just, I, I had a couple that came by the shop, the neighbors just talking to me, and they'd read the article, and looked at the article, it was talking about 15 billion, and their question was, is why wasn't I told this before I voted on sales tax? So, I mean, it just, it makes people start questioning some of it, and a little confused, and I was too, so, that's all I have.
Brett?
Yeah. Uh, Jeff, when do we stand on our third check of service?
We interview tomorrow and next two days, we're interviewing for both the operator and, I think, our, and Thursday. So hopefully then a week, ten day will have a, approved feeling.
So when, when we start?
If it was a ten day at least.
Uh-huh.
If we're ten day at least, we get them all on board, and if they go through the personal requirements and be tested, I'll, I'll, I said a couple weeks, if you ask.
Okay. And, uh, the other thing, I wish, would you set me up a meeting, you and I, with the military C representatives about my likes?
Sure.
As soon as possible.
Sure.
And, uh, also, uh, Rob, this is something you've been talking about, when are we gonna set up a work session so we can do some long-range planning? What do you think, Rob?
Once we get, once we get through the first Tuesday in November. Once we get through that first Tuesday in November.
First Tuesday in November.
Okay. And, uh, the other thing, uh, I'll be hosting a community meeting October 28th at 7:00 PM at, uh, Pick a Rucker Gym on Glover Street. So everybody that lives in the second ward, you're invited to come and wash your opposition opinions, wants, concerns, whatever with me. On October 28th, 7:00 PM, Pick a Rucker, Pick a Rucker Gym Nation on Glover Street. That's all I have.
You feed this?
Yep. Yep, I'm feeding you too.
I'm going to that just 'cause it'll be the first time a predator's ever fed me. Um, talk, thanks. Derek?
I've been up here for four years, and I own it. If there's one thing I'm noted for is being frank. I think you need to look back. I said that after the sales tax effort was defeated, I would not support another special election, but that I would consider it if the financial climate warranted during a normally standard-called election. And that's, that's where I stuck to. And as far as meeting and talking about any of that money, if you remember the half cent, I have been 100% clear, 50 cents out of every dollar, the thing that I talk time to time about is a repair or rehab and a maintenance program for the city. That's the only thing I focus on. I've never had a discussion, with all due respect, I'm not for or against the event center, 'cause even when we went through it, we never got to the stage where I was for or against it. Never had a single discussion about using any of that money for anything for me other than the repair and the rehab and the retro of the city. If I had had a meeting, I would tell you, 'cause if there's one thing I am, I'm frank, and I'll own it, whether you disagree with me or not. I'm never going around and not being 100% for, so, so that's where we stand on that. Um, I had a conversation with the chief, and I had a conversation with the city attorney and the mayor and council members. We're gonna get some, um, some information. I believe that we have essentially ceded our authority on the interstate that goes Lebanon. We've got about 10 and a half miles. I've lived here for nearly seven or eight years. I think I've seen Lebanon do traffic stops on there two times. And I don't know, for those of you that drive to Nashville, but the minute you hop on in Lebanon, you are screaming until you get to Mount Juliet, where you know they run radar, and you slow back down again. So we're gonna look at some plans to create some type of enforcement on the interstate, and we'll get some plans from, from the police department, some, some things that we can do to, to take control of that.
We used to do that. I don't know when it started.
We're gonna get back on that. Um, in discussion for the roads, uh, we had had conversations in the last budget process, and Robert can maybe elaborate, but Kathy and I had talked about the, the Beckwith piece and this Legends Drive piece, that we believe that if you're working on both these things simultaneously, if you're on the interstate and you're driving, the minute you hit Lebanon, you're gonna look to your right and see a road being built, and then when you get to Beckwith, you're gonna look to your right and see a road being built, and that's an indicator of growth. And we believe that that's gonna attract people. And we are working on the debt service, and again, I've never had a single conversation to use any of that half a cent for, never had a conversation to spend any of the money on anything other than repair, rehab, repair and maintenance. And I think I've been consistent in that. But Robert can talk to the debt service if you ever wanna have a question with them about how we're gonna pay for those roads. Um, I remain committed to the half a cent, 'cause I really believe the one greatest area that we're lacking in this city is repair, rehab and maintenance of what we have. I truly believe, I wanna track that up as much as everybody else, but I believe taking care of what we have is as attractive as building something new. I, I believe it. Um, the last thing I have, the mayor, and this is one thing, the first Tuesday in November's election night, I know we have three council members that have seats there, so we do need to make a decision, 'cause I think previously, we have not had a council meeting.
And I would make that motion, or I can make, and I'll second it.
You can make, 'cause I'm running a pose, I'm like the backup quarterback, I'm just kinda cruising.
Yeah, I've been seeing, I've been seeing your Facebook posts, and I'm thinking, well, that's easy for you to say. But anyway, yeah, I would make a motion that we, uh, eliminate that meeting, and if there's something that's really hot and we wanna.
Special calls.
Second.
We're, we're all about special calls, so we've never had a problem with that anyway.
Yeah. That's.
I, I couldn't tell.
That's all I have.
I would make a motion to spin the roads.
Second.
In a second. All in favor of spinning the roads?
Aye.
Huh? All in. Uh, motion, spin the roads, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, all right. Uh, motion to spin the roads, all right. We have a motion to.
My motion would be to, uh, eliminate, uh, those little trockets.
Yeah.
Preyology.
Just cancel that meeting.
Cancel that.
Cancel that meeting.
Second.
All right, I have first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Okay. All right. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You guys here, and she got a class. He's not here.
Well, that's a Spanish term, I heard.
I, I can't, I can't believe it. Uh, Jeff?
Yeah, we're gonna start picking up leaves pretty soon this time.
Yeah. And, and, oh, would, yeah, we'll start picking some. We'll be the bigger league back, probably, we'll always act.
We're convinced, we're in the fall, it is, and, so. I wish we could get something that puts a big, long, this very, this street. I mean, that's the biggest, that's the most littering thing I've ever seen around here, really, isn't it? Open yards and they blow it out in the street. At least if we could blow back in and be better, so. And it dents us too, it, it starts, and you get on it wet, and it's sliding into it. And I've had one pe, one or two people call me about the, these papers being thrown out in the driveways. They got wondering about if that's not littering. I noticed they had the same problem in Nashville, so I don't know if it's, and the worst thing is where the houses, where nobody lives in, and they don't pick them up. Sometimes you'll have to see a half dozen to a dozen papers laying there. And I've had two or three to call me, but I had one on the windward drive to call, and he was pretty upset about it, but he tried to stop, and they wouldn't pay no attention to him, so.
He called the church.
I don't know what he was doing, not, but it is, it doesn't, a litter.
Yeah. He called the church also, so, and it is, we might just have a discussion about that.
It was a little vague.
All right. Jeff?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Okay.
Now, Mayor, on the paper issue, when we, uh, my memory serves me, Danny, when we looked at it before, it was an issue of, I don't know how to say it any other way, uh, it's freedom of the press, and it's pro- commandment issues, and it's protected. I don't agree with, you know, how they pile up and et cetera, et cetera, but I do know that we have, we've already been there, done that. We did try, and then, but I think the courtesy taught them codes to the papers. Once their folks distribute them, if they say they're not getting done, maybe they take them off the list or something. I mean, that's about the best we did last time. We're not saying, well, we just really was, we didn't get much traction, so. Anyway, um, I just wanted to just say that, I mean, I was out at early voting the other day, um, it's kinda interesting, um, I had a, a fellow from Germany come up, and he's like, you know, can I take a picture? I wanted to try to imitate, you know, his, his accent, but he's, I said, well, sure, whatever, how about it? And so he was taking a picture, and, um, anyway, we have a German, French, uh, actually it is a company, recording, you know, TV company in town, and they were just very amused at the way that we stand up and bark, I guess it is, for elections that are in voting. They don't do that, but we had a really great dialogue about it. He and his colleague appear, and they're going all across the country, just learning about how different communities do voting, I mean, other countries, et cetera, so I thought it was pretty neat, and, uh, I gave him a card, contact information, so maybe we'll get something back that'll say, you know, this is kinda their exposé for their work that they did, and I just thought it was just kinda neat, because, I mean, they talked about it. And then this morning, Ms. Lisa, who's a teacher down there, bought a bunch of students through, and they went through the court, I mean, they went through the old post office and saw, they couldn't vote, of course, they're not there yet, but anyway, they went through there, looked at all the artifacts, and how nice it is, and how well it's, you know, been, you know, restored and revived, so, I mean, it just, there are people all over town that are coming to see us, and they're doing sightseeing tours and things of that nature, so that, that particular post office is just really, I mean, it's a, it's a monument in and of itself, and that's, you know, especially very, very prideful in how it's been fixed up, et cetera. So, you know, we, we've got a lot of folks that are just kinda coming to see us and shopping on the square, and, you know, walking around, the weather's been beautiful, so. And I appreciate everybody who's been out, and, uh, you know, whether you're hoping to sign, or whether you're just coming to vote, or whether you're just coming to see what we're doing down there, or count people out, I've heard every, I've had every tale there is to tell about every kinda thing, so, anyway, I do appreciate that, and, uh, we got a little ways to go, so, anyway, I do appreciate that. Um, I'd like to thank Jeff and his crew. I mean, you know, I, I'm actually really ashamed in, in a lot of ways about our, um, about flooding, and about drainage, and about things that have just been crying, because we live in a bottle. It's Lebanon, we're in a bottle. You know, we cannot make water run uphill. I'm terrified of way to do it, nobody else has either. But I really wanna tell them that we have been doing double time, trying to really work and use the money we've allocated and get some things done, even if it's minor, it can make a major difference. And, uh, you know, we've spent a lot of hours, early, late, weekends, um, just a lot of work, just trying to get some things done. We've got Beckwith Road going on, uh, we have Legends Drive going on, and I too, and I shared with Derek, you know, some time back, just, just some time back, that those were two independent opportunities, but still collectively to make, you know, we either grow our tax base by raising taxes, or we can grow our base by, you grow our businesses. And so it's just whichever way you want it. I'd rather for us not to tax ourselves, if we can bring in other opportunities for other people for employment and, and revenue and things of that nature. So to me, I think it's a win-win, and Mount Juliet has certainly got it going, under armor FedEx and the things that are going on, so I'd like to be there and enjoy some of their prosperity, and, uh, I'm not even shameful about it, I, I'll just say it straight out, so. Um, the other thing I wanted to say, um, on the grass issue, uh, the bottom line on the grass issue is, I've never seen a Chinese joke. I just hadn't, you know, frankly, I, I think the only thing you can do is to call them out on a codes level and say, please don't do that again. I mean, it's just, yeah, it's nasty and slimy and all this kinda stuff, but I guess when I look at, you know, flooding my house and taking out my air unit versus that on the street, it, they're both bad, depending on which pothole's yours, as the old saying goes, that pothole in front of your own driveway is worse than the pothole somewhere else. You know, the bottom line is, we just got lots of things that we try to work on. Uh, one thing I would like to do when we have a work session though, is we, I really would appreciate if we could give back to aspects. I just really feel like we've lost a focus on, not codes necessarily, because that's by exceptional, and when someone calls about a codes issue, I think we're very, we're on it. We, we go and try to apply the rules that we have and, you know, give them a fair understanding of when to go, et cetera, et cetera. But I would just tell you, um, the one thing I did hear from some of the folks that have been visiting me, our city's not clean. It's very dirty. It's very, very dirty. Now, is it somebody that flew through here that's hopping on the interstate? I'm not saying it is ridden, but we got banners and signs and everything from Kentucky Fried Chicken that's been rotted out for I don't know how long on West Main. We've gotta get back to some of those fundamentals that are curb appeal. You know, you do everything you wanna do and bring in all kind of, um, companies, but they drive from town, I want them to go, this is nice looking, we got a park playground, we got a this, we got this, we got this. They're assets to us, and we really and truly, and personally speaking, as the representative for the West War, you know, I want that to look that way until it becomes full-fledged industrial out there, and even then, they need to be held accountable to, you know, landscaping and things of that, you know. And that is a work in progress. Oh, my goodness, it's gonna be perfect. But, you know, when you have a war. Oh, my goodness, it's going to be perfect, but, you know, when you have a war, bulldozers and new development and stuff, it's very, very problematic to get established, and I understand that. But I really think we need to get back, is I do not want to look up and go, how did we let this happen? When we have the authority as a city leadership to make a difference. If that means more code enforcement, if that means us getting out of their way and letting them do their job, if it means more sessions to go to code, whatever, most people will clean it up, you just tell them, they will do it, they will do it. And then planning commission's got to be right there with us, you lock staff, we all got to work together. But, um, I've just had some issues and I've heard other people give feedback that are out of town, so... I'm just saying, it's, it's really great to hear some objective feedback sometimes, so... I really believe that when we do our planning, if y'all don't mind, let's look at, you know, some aesthetics. In addition, it's kind of like we talked about the sidewalk, I don't know why in the world, and I'm not blaming this or pointing a finger, why you could, or why we would want to put a nice dark white concrete sidewalk against a yellow, very, very, you know, in good shape, old sidewalk, when you can actually stand. Now, I think Ms. Conrad shared that with me years ago, when we were talking about, there are things you can do to make them look where you don't even know they're seamless on this, you don't even know what's new and what's old, but it doesn't make you look like a patchwork quilt. I mean, just, it just actually gives up continuity when you're visualizing it. But to me, that's curb appeal, your schools, your playgrounds, your work, your jobs, um, that's, to me, important. And, uh, you can't go undo it. If you don't do it, you can't, you know, you can't go back and fix, patch and give it, and so, those are some things that to me, I just, I just think that, you know, we're busy doing lots of stuff, our place, that's something I think we need to go back and really look at. And I'll tell you, from my in-town, um, I've not been in a position to go to planning commission, free planning commission, if I plan to be there, uh, like I've done for, for quite some time before, and share those things that I expected to be done, and I'll work hand in hand with Invaile helping, so, thank you, Mayor.
We had our guest, uh, Ben Slavich with, y'all please stand. They're a lively bunch, if you could interpret, uh, they're lively bunch, a fun bunch, and we're all glad to have you here. I've been with them a couple of times. And if we could, I'm sure they'd appreciate it, and I'd appreciate it if, after a council meeting, if we could have them come up here and, uh, council be in behind them and that way take a picture for, for them, would that be okay?
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
Can I say a few words?
Please.
Yeah, um, I'm Gary Lynn, I, I'll...
Come up here.
Yeah. Sure. Good evening.
No, not here.
Oh, okay, got to get it right. Uh, my name is Gary Lynn, I'm, uh, I work with, uh, two of your finest citizens, David McKinney and Hugo Sandoval, and not, not work, but volunteer with them in an organization called the Tennessee Partners of the Americas. And the, and the Tennessee Partners of the Americas works with a national organization called Partners of the Americas. And we've had a relationship between Tennessee and the country of Venezuela for almost fifty years. And we've done many wonderful cultural exchanges, people coming up, uh, people going down. But, uh, right now, we have sixteen, um, coaches, uh, players, and physical education instructors from Venezuela here in Lebanon, and they're over at Cumberland University, and, uh, we're having a seminar there so that they can learn about, um, your fine services in the sports area and your fine facilities and your great leadership. And, uh, we were able to bring them here because, uh, two years ago, uh, Dr. Sandoval and David McKinney and I and others wrote a grant to the US State Department, uh, featuring, uh, Lebanon as a typical and, uh, more than a typical, an outstanding American community with outstanding services and sports facilities, and one from which, uh, people from Venezuela or other countries could, could learn about the best that America has to offer. So, uh, they're here in the community, I was, uh, we had a wonderful, uh, time with the mayor the other evening over at the university, and this afternoon with Sue Banat- Banana, uh, who came over and greeted us. And I was telling Sue that David McKinney and others from the community helped us write our grant, and now here we are this week in, in Lebanon, and we're spending over ten thousand dollars here, uh, in motel, for motel and food and other services, uh, to make this, uh, project a reality. So, we're real excited about being here, we're learning a lot, and we're getting the warmest welcome we could get anywhere in the world.
Excellent.
Okay, we will move on to the consent agenda. Ordinance fourteen forty-seven sixty-eight. Ordinance fourteen forty-seven sixty-seven. Ordinance fourteen forty-seven sixty-eight. Ordinance fourteen forty-seven seventy. Ordinance fourteen forty-seven seventy-one. Ordinance fourteen forty-seven seventy-three. Ordinance fourteen forty-seven seventy-four. Ordinance fourteen forty-seven seventy-five. Ordinance fourteen forty-seven seventy-six. Ordinance fourteen forty-seven seventy-nine. Ordinance fourteen forty-seven eighty. And ordinance fourteen forty-seven eighty-one on consent agendas.
Will be approved.
Session.
Approved in a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Consent agenda is passed. Go to O P S, ordinance fourteen forty-six fifty-five, first reading, changing property at two thirty-six and two forty East Spring Street from R one to R M six.
Listen, my ward, Mayor, uh, there was one that we sent back to the planning commission for them to relook at, and, uh, they did not make, uh, take a stand on it, however, as I said earlier, this is part of the spot zoning...
The two-way partnership.
Practice in this city, and, uh, put a multi-family right next to R one and R two, uh, let's say, is, uh, something that the people don't want over there, and at this time, I'd make a motion to it tonight.
Okay.
Uh, Andy, may I ask, I was, at some point, I passed, I think, I think you shared with us a motion to deny. It's, it's, you tell me, I don't, I'm not so sure it's something, it's something dear.
Well, they're not prohibitive, it's bad form, because if it doesn't pass...
Oh, wow.
If the law doesn't pass, then you still have to do, if it doesn't automatically pass, it doesn't stop.
I just remember there was something about, I would second that motion, Brad.
Motion to be negative, or...
Okay, well, I, I would second your motion, it's your council ward, and it's your call, and...
Okay, I have a first and a second and discussion. Personally, I, I think the, what the developer has done here to make adjustments, uh, for the front going east spring, I think, uh, he has taken consideration of the area, but also, I was kind of looking at what Nashville is, in East Nashville, what that has become, uh, because of, um, uh, well, you got the square, what we're doing to improve. I think this is a part that will, uh, build and help that area and revive that area, so, I just, uh, I think it's a good project and, um, wish that y'all could see it too.
Well, like I said, we've had been in a meeting with the residents out there, and, uh, just like I said, only two areas out there that, uh, were this particular property here that need, uh, upkeep and redevelopment, and the other people out there are doing a nice job, uh, doing, keeping their homes up, they put a lot of money in these historic homes, and, uh, like I said, putting the multi-family out there, but just, we're not following in line with the historic zoning that that district is looking at.
What kind of multi-family are you talking about? Is it like, uh, two or three-story apartment buildings or?
No, it's...
Section eight, what is it?
No, it's more of a town, uh, the front homes are, I believe, uh, on the larger lots, and then behind it is on a smaller lots that we go with the zoning. The properties, uh, in this space are probably going to be about two hundred and fifty thousand each, so...
Mayor, I don't have permission to speak, but I live on that street, and...
Miss, uh, Ms. Pyatt, would you come up to the microphone? I don't know, mostly spin the roads, I've got a loud enough voice. No, I need you on the record, please, if it's okay, I'm sorry.
Motion to suspend the roads to west...
Make them work. But you look...
Have a second. All in favor?
I live at four, two, East Spring Street, it's the old granny's home. And I know the property you're talking about, go on to Dr. Sam McCarlin. Now, there is a home, the S Q house, which is right down from that, that is a total wreck. It has been zoned, uh, apartment house, it is just awful, it's just going down and down. And I would hope that you would not rezone this. This street used to be where all the professors at Cumberland University lived, and we own a lot of property, and of course, there's nothing on it. But I would hope that you would not rezone this because of this particular situation. I think you need to take care of that house that the S Q's own because it is just really in bad shape. I, I, I see young girls going in there all hours of the night, people parking their cars on the street and walking around while they do that, and I'm not nosy, but I do think it has ruined the neighborhood, and I would encourage you not to do this.
Thanks, Mrs. Pyatt.
Props are, but that's up to the council.
I have a motion in a second. Uh, all in favor of motion?
Aye.
Pose. I'll write down what you did. Fashion to...
Ever know, yes, folks, I don't know if that's a hundred percent no or... Andy, what's the other, chores is just not my luxury, so that's, so that's...
Do a first and second.
Well, we did, I just want to say, all right, U business, ordinance fourteen forty-seven seventy-seven, first reading, authorized purchase of road...
Second.
First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Ordinance fourteen forty-seven seventy-eight, first reading, uh...
Second.
Local escort district, at first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Pass. Ordinance fourteen forty-seven eighty-two, first reading to amend Lebanon municipal code adopting the two thousand and twelve, uh, international codes, uh, at first and second. I just want to let everyone know that this is something that we really would prefer to leave like, like we had, but state is requiring this, uh, uh, timeframes, when a new, uh, code comes out, uh, what year is it out now, fifteen?
Yes.
Uh, fifteen or sixteen?
We have a lot as long as it can.
Uh, we, we have to have air codes within a certain number of years, so, uh, we're doing this, but we've, uh, kind of made it so it's, wouldn't go in effect till first of the year, so that we can get with the builders and developers and let them know of the changes and have some meetings here first, so... All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass. Ordinance fourteen forty-seven eighty-three, first reading, authorized purchase of playground equipment.
Motion to approve.
Second. At first and a second.
And like, discussion?
Discussion.
Yeah, I just, I don't know, there's no reason everyone should know, but, um, this is just a little, uh, information that our director, arts director has left, I guess to give us some insight into what the new equipment will look like. If anybody's interested, obviously, up there, and that they can kind of go over there and mosey around and look at it. Um, and basically, I guess you would anticipate something of that nature when it comes time for this big construction.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Pass. Ordinance fourteen forty-seven eighty-four, first reading, authorized purchase of vacuum machine.
Motion to approve.
The gas apartment, at first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Pass. Ordinance fourteen forty-seven eighty-five, first reading, authorized purchase of R T U, C T U upgrades for the Lebanon Water Plant.
Seven.
At first.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Pass. Ordinance fourteen forty-seven eighty-six, first reading, authorized budget amendments for the Lebanon Fire Department for its own insurance payment. At first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Pass. Uh, ordinance fourteen forty-seven eighty-seven, first reading, authorized, uh, G H S O grant funds transfer for the Lebanon Police Park, these are traffic grants.
Not much, Mr.?
At first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Pass. Resolution fourteen eighteen fifty-three, authorized staff submit, uh, projects, uh, to the Nashville area M D O.
Second.
At first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass. Ordinance fourteen forty-seven eighty-eight, first reading, to approve a whole harmless agreement with CBS Pharmacy on their side.
Annu.
At first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass. Ordinance fourteen forty-seven eighty-nine, first reading, authorized whole harmless agreement with, uh, self, uh, Cumberland Properties.
Motion to approve.
At first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Pass. Ordinance fourteen forty-seven ninety, first reading, to authorize purchase of two hybrid vehicles for the police department.
Session.
At first and second, discussion?
Yeah, just, I guess, the information of folks that are listening, the hybrid is what, Chief?
Uh, basically, until, as long as you're idling, it runs on electric.
Okay.
And then up to, if you're a certain speed, it runs on electric. We've been, you, uh, one of our task force agents has one that's running, and he's been getting forty-five to forty-seven miles to a gallon, so it's a lot better, so, and of course, with the detectives, there are a lot of times it's idling, we're doing their job, so we're going to try these and see our work, so, absolutely.
Because I think there's one thing, and a lot of folks would know this, there's no residential shit, but we've got our first, uh, uh, plant fleet of gas, natural gas, um, converted vehicles for gassy downtown, which is about fifty percent of our expenditure from Petro, I mean, regular petroleum products, so I think we're headed in a direction that's more green, or at least cleaner emissions, et cetera, buy from ourselves with a better rate.
And these don't have to be plugged in, they actually charge themselves, so they don't have to be plugged in either, they charge themselves through the engine.
That's correct, thank you, I just, I'm trying to bring it up, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Pass. Ordinance fourteen forty-seven ninety-one, first reading, authorized transfer of funds to purchase additional drug dog police department.
Annu.
At first and second, all in favor?
Chief, how many dogs do we have?
One.
Huh?
Just one.
Three?
One. Yes, sir, and then first we got four shifts, and so we're going to try to get another, and we actually got lucky with this one that it came across, and, and we're getting that at a really good price, and the train's going to be included in the price of the dog, so we got a really good deal almost.
So, but the other, we have, this is a bomb drug, a drug, but we also have a bomb dog, pretty good public safety purpose.
Right, but not police.
Yeah, so we actually have two at the city collection.
That's right.
Okay, I was a little person with for a, I, I might be for him, I, yeah.
When Sean left, when Sean left, that was his dog.
So, we have, we have two drug dogs then?
Yes, sir, that's correct, yes, sir.
They still have a marijuana on it, all this.
That was a bomb dog, Sean's was a bomb dog.
Okay, so before you buy the dog, you're bringing that one back, and it will be another drug?
No, that was Sean's dog, he took it, it belonged to him, it was already trained up.
You can get another dog?
That's right, we'll have two, and Mike will have one, that's right, we'll just have two drug dogs altogether, that's it.
Do, I'm sure you all give statistics about how often we use those?
Yes.
Oh, no, 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 don't do that, no, no, that's fine.
I got it today.
That would be very helpful, I'd like to know.
Absolutely.
How long or how often they work.
Absolutely, I think we've saved about twenty-one pounds of marijuana already this year.
I just would be curious, and folks might be doing all that information as well.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Pass. Ordinance fourteen forty-seven ninety-two, first reading...
Motion to approve.
Retitled, uh...
Second.
First now, great, good petition, uh, at first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Pass. Pass.